Good evening, welcome to the August 27th Board Meeting for the Daniel Boone Area School District. If you could all rise and pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thirty and just for all.
Mr. Wolf, if he could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Raffke. Ms. Albrecht?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Here.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. B. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wolf, here. Mr. J. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Raffke?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Procedures for public participation are located on the inside of your agenda cover. If you haven't done so already, if you could please sign in in the back. Are there any agenda edits? I do have one, I'm not sure it's edited per se, but under 10D, the cross-country chip, I'd like to make sure that we handle that item separately as opposed to grouping it all together in 10A for E, so if we could just have that as a separate discussion. Mr. Dershowitz, I might ask an input for us then.
Ah, I think so, maybe.
Are there any other agenda edits? Hearing none. There will be an executive session following this for negotiations and personnel items. Anything from you, Mr. Hurley?
Nope, the opening of schools went very well today in terms of what happened in the schools themselves. Had a few minor glitches in transportation, but we're working to resolve them with the families involved, and so it was a great opening of schools today.
We'll see, everybody from the administration looks very chipper, bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, refreshed. We'll try to get you out of here as soon as we can. Alrighty, any presentations by public on agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Items 7A through 7N, as in Nancy. Mr. Dershowitz, or do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and J. Scott, any discussion? Not, Mr. Wolf, would you read your consent statement, please?
Items listed 7A through 7N in the consent agenda will be deemed adopted unless I hear motions to the opposite. Motion passes.
Alrighty. 8A, we have one item under personnel for consent items. Motion for that, please.
Make the motion.
Motion, Mrs. Olson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Strobel, was it? Alrighty, any discussion? Mr. Wolf?
This is for a consent agenda item, 8A, will be adopted unless I hear a motion to the contrary.
Alright, 8A passes. Under Finance, we have two items. Do I have a motion for 9AB or either/or? Is that a motion for you, Mr. Scott?
I would make a motion. I would make a motion for 9B, I had a question on 9A.
Okay, well, let's take 9B then, do I have a second for 9B?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Olson, any discussion on item 9B? Alright, well, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, do I have a motion for 9A then, please? Yeah, we gotta get a motion on that?
You gotta get a motion first.
Okay.
Or if it's not a motion, it dies.
Motion by Mrs. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Olson, discussion?
Are we bound to do this, take this back?
Are we bound to take it back, is that the question?
This is repayment.
Oh.
Yeah.
My bad.
Yeah, the agreement's consistent with the way we've handled other administrators exiting the school districts as far as repayment, he is obligated to make the repayment. It's not contracted, his contract doesn't address the term of repayment, but the one here, the term is consistent with what we've done for other employees, professional employees and administrators.
So, Mr. Harris will be, I forget the exact amount of the attachment, but he'll be repaying that amount on a monthly basis?
It's approximately $5,000 or $200,000.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Well, let's take 10A for E less D then, unless anybody else wants to break these down.
Making a motion for A, B, C, and D?
Yes, correct.
Move.
Second.
Mrs. Olson, second by Mr. B. Scott. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for item 10D, please.
So moved.
Mr. Dershowitz, move, so a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Albrecht. So, maybe, Mr. Dershowitz, you can help me out here, so... My question here is, so, what's the purpose of this invitational? I mean, we, you know, when we made sure that we corrected our imbalance when it came to, we weren't paying for uniforms, we weren't paying for, so, you know, we've corrected that, we're paying for equipment and uniforms now. But I would think if this is an item that's not actually a, I mean, we're not, it's actually not in our schedule, right? It's an optional item that they're going to?
I mean, we've been going there for years now, I'd say probably at least six years.
Has the school always paid for the fee to get us in there?
I believe that, I believe they've always paid the fee, I don't know off the head.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, my opinion, I guess I'm, you know, but my thought process was that any invitational items that a, any group wants to go to, whether it's soccer or whoever, if they choose to go to that, I'm having to support it and, you know, provide the vans, and I see the boosters are providing more accommodations and such. But I would think that it would be up to the kids to chip in. This is where I think the fundraising comes into play. If teams do still fundraise, hopefully not as much as they were, that was the idea, was try to cut that back a little bit. But I think this is where some of the fundraising should go, if indeed they want to go to these type of events.
Well, you know, I agree, but this has probably been in the schedule for, like I said, it's at least in six years.
Well, yeah, I mean, and they're certainly already on the, I looked up the event, and we're already listed there, that's for sure.
I think it's something next year, if you don't want them to do, I guess it's a good conversation to have now.
I actually don't, I don't recall ever approving this before, that's why, do you recall, Mr. Wolf, approving this at all?
Can't say that I did.
Probably because we used to pay everything. I mean, there was years where we paid everything, you know, bought new uniforms, how many thousands of dollars, we paid for everything, so...
But that's, yeah, that's why, you know, I think we've corrected that issue, and I, you know, I think we need to have a...
It's probably the only big event that they go to, because even when they do, and I'll say when, we always do, make it to districts and send them around to states, we don't say overnight, you know, because that's in the area, but this is the only...
Right, but that's something that the school should be, you know, providing transportation to, and paying for that, and everything else, you know, because that's part of playoffs and everything else.
Whether we ran here on Friday, at Penn State, or we ran at, I'm just throwing something out of a tray, because I don't know whether the business equal one, let's say we went to, you know, Henderson for invitationals, you're still paying that fee, whether it's Penn State's race entry fee, or the Henderson invita-, which if not Henderson invitational, just throwing a hypothetical out there, you're still paying that same fee. Whether we were, let's say we go to an invitational held by a county school, we're still paying that fee, whether it's in county or out of county, to enter, and both teams in. So, the cost isn't going to be any different, whether they're going to the school district, whether we're racing at Penn State, or racing at county invitational, you still have costs that you're paying. As a matter of fact, sometimes the county costs, I know in middle school, a lot more sometimes.
So, whenever we go to counties, we have to pay a fee?
Yeah. Yeah, you pay the race, the race side, they call the cost event. So, it wouldn't matter what invitational we were going to that weekend, there would still be a fee for both teams to enter, mail in, you know. Just, this one has to be Penn State, so, you know, raise the flag, but if we were going...
Well, I mean, like I said, the boosters are, I mean, we're providing the vans,
Right.
but, you know, the boosters are picking up the hotel...
How are the, Mr. Hurley, I don't know if you can help, how are the boosters picking up the district van? Or paid by the district?
Van and race costs are covered by our budget, according to the motion.
Yeah, so it says in the motion. The boosters are covering it.
It says district van, rooms funded by, and then it says van and race costs covered by the athletic department budget.
I don't think it's a district van.
I think it's kind of a miswording, how that was presented.
If they're using the district van, they have a gas card that's in there, if they could use the gas card.
Yeah, that's, that's out of the point, like, well, the van's already paid for, there's a gas card in there, so it's already funded by the district, the car is, shouldn't really be listed as the music, this sports booster paying, picking up for the van, because we're picking up the cost.
I think that was the main point. I think the race cost. It's just the race cost, right?
So, I think it's 500 bucks, if you register the girls and the boys.
Boys and girls, but honestly, if you look at any invitational we go to, you're probably looking at that cost, or both, you know, it's probably around the same, and then some are more.
So, I'm just trying to get clarity, so, I mean, like I said, I don't, I don't recall us paying for it in the past, so I'm assuming that...
When did the school board, or the school district start paying for all those sports again? Because that would have obviously been rolled in at that point, like essentially.
Unless it wasn't overnight trip before.
It always was. It always overnighted.
Yeah, or maybe it just was under the radar, we never knew it.
Yeah.
I know the first few years, you know, the parents, we did raise all the money to go, but they've been going here since my daughter was running, and she just graduated college, so...
Yeah, my daughter did, three years did.
Again, I come back to, you know, we don't have a clear policy on this, so, you know, if we were to approve this now, I mean, so what, you know, what would...
What about the invitational two weeks from now, but any years for that too? Is that already an athletic part of the budget?
Well, so, obviously, you know, I mean...
Is that why, because it's overnight?
No, I mean, again, I don't, you know, I don't know if the district was paying for all these fees, and we just never knew about it, and to me, because it's overnight, yeah, they get approved, now we realize we're paying for these fees, and if we've been doing it all along, maybe that's fine. But, you know, I mean, there's certainly other teams that go to invitational stuff that I think pay their own way, and what's to stop them from now saying, well, you track's doing it, why can't we get money for paying for our, you know, events we go to and whatnot? So, again, I go back to, should we have a, some kind of, you know, we...
I think, I'm sure I agree, sport has fees into ornaments or whatever they enter.
Right, so, you know, that was, you know, my thought process, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, was that if the district is now making sure we're paying for uniforms and all, you know, most of the equipment and whatnot, then, you know, the team should be probably thinking these items up, but I could be wrong. So, I think, you know, obviously, this is coming up, so we probably need us to approve this, and, you know, just like I suggested, that we have something written down for, you know, when teams go away, like the bowling team and TSA and all that jazz, that we have a, we have a set amount so that we know what's, you know, so there's no favoritism and everything else.
You kind of hit it on the head, once it's in the budget, you know, then, alright, it's the budget, so I guess the beginning of the conversation starts with the budget process, to see, you know, what things are in there, and then make a decision before they're committed to it.
I would think the invitational costs themselves that the school districts pay, wouldn't matter where we were going that weekend, you're going to pay invitational costs, not going to be much difference.
Thank you for adding some information to this, Mr. Dershowitz. Any other board comments, questions?
I have this question, should we be having an executive meeting, live activity meeting with the talk last week?
Sounds like a good idea, Mr. Miller, are you, are you chair that?
I am.
Congratulations. Alrighty, so we have a motion on the floor. Yeah, it's to roll call.
Okay, this motion is for 10D, Mr. Wolf, yes. Mr. J. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Raffke?
Yes.
Alright, item 11A. Motion to approve our superintendent search to the BCIU. Mr. Dershowitz, a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Any comments or questions on that? Mr. Strobel, do you have any questions on this?
Originally did have some questions on it.
I didn't hear you.
I did have some questions on this in regards to...
Still on?
I turned it on.
What's your number? 13.
Is this in regards to our emails?
Yes.
Those questions?
Yes, I didn't know if there were, if you could answer all your questions, and so I made sure this was separate items, so if you did have any questions or comments, you could...
Bring that up now?
Yep.
But we'll leave you and I reading that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like, I wanted to make sure that when we go through this process, that we take in consideration the people that we already have in the district that may be involved by to do the position, I think there's a learning or going outside sometimes, and I think there's potentially somebody, you know, needs to open it up to an early process. Should I go more?
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, where I think we're all coming from is that it is a process, and I would encourage anybody who's interested in the job to apply.
Okay.
And then, you know, the IU will help us to kind of go through the applicants, do the background checks, help us advertising it, and, you know, help to kind of whittle, you know, down the field here. Certainly with input from every board member, as well as, you know, input from our administrators, as well as teachers and the public as well, so...
Yeah, I have a, my sister-in-law works for a school, they went through the process, personally, they were hiring, and the teachers were allowed to bring forward questions, they were able to bring them up, so that they could be answered, part of the process from that perspective, at least be able to...
Yeah, yep. Are you, but you're good with the IU, they're helping us with certain...
You have to go through this, actually contacted somebody who's part of that, and they have to go through that process to make the other work.
Yep, okay. That being said, how about a roll call vote, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mr. Raffke? Mr. J. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yes?
Mr. Raffke? Yes.
Alright, that takes us to 12A through C, have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Dershowitz, do I have a second? Is that Mr. B. Scott I heard then?
Yes, you did, I heard that.
Roll call vote, Mr. Wolf.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, my bad.
The mentorship program, is that, is that a, like, how, what are the qualifications for being a mentor? And is there a, is this, is it a customary thing, if every new teacher gets a mentor?
Well, it is part of the contract.
It's part of the contract, it's also a mandate by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. It's also a very valuable thing in terms of teachers becoming acclimated to the buildings they are at, as well as being acclimated to the curriculum that they're going to be teaching, so it's something that's very worthwhile.
I'm not questioning the validity of it, I'm asking, just how does one become a mentor?
The principals are the ones who are primarily appoint the mentors based upon what they know in the classroom's fit, curriculum, needs, when we hire people, candidates, we pretty much do a strength assessment where we feel they're really strong at, in areas in which they want to grow, and we try to match people up who can help them in the areas that we think they'll be, they need to grow in. Or it's a curriculum piece where they're closely tied to the curriculum that they're going to be teaching.
And then just contractually, contractual obligation aside, they're compensated because there's a substantial amount of extra?
Yes, yes, when it's done with fidelity, which is done well most of the time, they're investing a significant amount of their personal time, meeting with that teacher, helping them with lesson planning, things of that nature, and the curriculum, and getting acclimated to our schools. It's usually a good investment.
And I just had one question. On C, amending the date, is that, what is that doing, anything?
So, the original was the 17th, I believe.
My understanding is to make it consistent with his new appointment, that is, new appointment.
Yeah, he started his new job on the 15th.
Okay, I just making sure that didn't put us into something in trouble.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mr. Raffke? Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yes? Mr. J. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Raffke?
Yes.
Old Business, motion to approve submitted, 13AB, motion, please? By Mrs. Albrecht, second, please?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Olson, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? She carries, new business, Mr. Wolf. I believe, as we know, there's uncontested across the board, I believe.
Yeah, sorry about that, I, in my haste to get all the information out to everybody, I just took a staple out, ran it through the scanner at work, sent it to, sent it to all of you, not realizing that President, President, Vice President, all were un-contested, so it looks like the only thing, the trustee is the only one with multiple applicants, so... But we still have the register vote, so if there's reason why we would not want to cast our district vote for any one of these candidates, let me know. If you have an interest, please send me your choice of the trustees, since those are the only uncontested races, and I'm absent, being directed not to vote for someone, vote for the uncontested, and then whoever responds to the trustee votes.
Very good, any questions, Mr. Wolf? Mrs. Olson, you got something, I believe?
Yeah, I recently at work had to take a course, about 15-minute course, on a spotted lantern fly to, Department of Ag requires us, at my job, to, every state vehicle has to be, the driver of the vehicle has to be, take this, take this little horse and get a permit from the Department of Ag, showing that they know how to properly do their part to minimize...
Could you walk around the car below her, underneath there?
It's, it matters more if you, if you travel outside the quarantine area a lot, and the whole of our school district is within the quarantine area, but it does teach you some helpful hints on how to avoid re-infecting areas that have just been recently sprayed for, to kill, to kill the adults, so you're not taking in your truck and going back to an area that was just sprayed the day before and bringing more adults back to that area. It would be useful, it is free, and I had discussed with Mr. Wolf as the chairman of the Facilities Committee, that maybe we should have our employees that use the vehicles back and forth between the different buildings.
Do we want to open it up to the public, or are we just saying our employees?
That is something that Mr. Wolf had mentioned, that, you know, because we do have volunteers that drive some of our vehicles. I don't know how that would work, to be honest. The permit goes, the instruction goes to the driver, but the permit goes with the vehicle. So, if you, if you have multiple people driving those vehicles, I assume you would expect at least some minimum amount of instruction to be given to people who are getting those vehicles to drive if we're going to use the permits?
Okay, I guess that's the facilities discussion, is that...
Yeah, I mean, the purpose of that permit is, one person, I took it, I had to educate my employees, they put the permits up, they inspect the vehicles prior to coming and going. So, we could kind of be probably the same concept for people, maybe getting a little card or something, so they can identify what they're looking for.
The reason I asked Mrs. Olson to bring it up under new business tonight is, facilities won't meet until the end of September, so, because we just met tonight, so we're looking for board discussion, possibly direction, that's the way the board wanted to go.
Are you, if I understood correctly, then someone from the state would come in and do the trainings, or Ms. Olson?
Yeah, online with the Department of Ag.
You would do a training?
Whoever takes, whoever the school district representative is, so let's just say it's you. You go online, you take the test, you pass the test, and then you say, I need 18 permits. You get those permits, then you sit down with people that are going to be your primary drivers of those vehicles, and explain to them the spotter and reply, what it looks like, and how you gave it to them.
Yeah, the training that you have to do online, probably about, it's about 15 to 20 minutes, but the train, the trainer, I mean, the train, train, you know, passing that information on to the individual drivers, it's less than five minutes, probably.
I'm sure Mr. Black is the obvious target right now.
You're that or Mr. Schmidt, because he knows who all the drivers are for the, for the circus side, and the music side would probably be Mr. Wolf. The other two questions, since the busy contractors are here too, how that's handled by them? Since they're actually going to be, most likely going the farthest out of our, out of the quarantine zone with large vehicles, possibly having hitchhikers.
What, what do the permits get us?
The permits get you nothing, it's just, if you, what's going to happen, I'm sure next year, is you're not going to be allowed to take a vehicle from inside the quarantine area and go like maybe into Maryland or outside the quarantine area. Some states are getting pretty upset, and so they don't want this bug coming. So, what's going to happen, if you're coming to Berks County, you're going to be making a delivery into somewhere out of the quarantine area. If you don't have this permit saying that you inspected your vehicle to the best of your ability, they might deny you entry into the non-quarantine area. One way to stop the spread, because we know they're in Virginia, we know they're in Maryland, we know they found it in New Jersey already, most likely, speaking out loud, but I'm sure they're going to find it in New York by the end of the summer. So, these states are not going to probably start clamping down, and if you live in another part of the state that doesn't have it...
Yeah, we already, the ball's hard to drop, it's going to be, it's dungeons, yeah.
I understand, but it's, it could come to that, and that's why the Department of Ag put this program out. I want to learn more about this insect than I ever want to learn.
And by the way, if you're talking about a tree, I think I parked under him in the parking lot here, so I'm just...
I don't know, since it's free, you know, I think we have a very large audience that would have to do it. I would say, from my opinion, let's go ahead and do it, well, a year's early, if you are.
We'll get into it.
I had one item, Mr. McKnight had asked me to bring up to the Sky... I had one item, Mr. McKnight had asked me to bring up the discussion about our student representatives. So, I'm not quite sure, a couple of years ago, when Ella Sweet was, was our rep, you know, she, she kind of sat over there and, next to me when I was over there, and attended most of the meetings, and she was able to, you know, very inclusive, and, you know, she's always, was very interested in what was going on, had, had the agenda, knew what was happening, and, and was offered input. And that's kind of dropped away, and we don't actually, you know, I know Mr. McKnight said, the kids said that the new ones that want to attend do, but they want to be kind of part of the, you know, part of the, up here, a part of the group, not, not kind of shoved to the back of the room, so.
Even Jonathan, Jonathan Coates was the last person, I think, I may, that's not, maybe that's not his name, but he said right what Mr. Miller said, as did Miss Sweet before that, so.
Go on, I proceed.
Last year, for whatever reason, we were figuring, we strained by paper, so there was less space for the students. Also, we're over here, I think it just really became, it adjusted, the kids started sitting in that room. So that's kind of, and then they just threw it in, they were part of the campus, remember both those students from last year? And it's interesting, Mr. McKnight, because in the audience, we could, we'd like to be part of the dialogue, but if you know they can't vote, they want to be part of the community, so that's really all.
As long as Mr. Miller and Mr. Strobel, I guess, don't like sitting close to each other, and, and the table.
I think it's a great idea, they should be involved, they want to be here, I think it's a great opportunity for the process.
We can put the student in charge of the. Any, any other, so Mr. McKnight, we'd love to have him, we'll make sure that there's room for them. All right, any other new items from other board members? Public comment on anything at all? I, I did push the button, my bad.
You know, I can, I can broadcast, I don't need. They shut them off, I mean, I, they still hear me, I mean, I had the mic shut off any time. Terry Temple, 2032 East Main Street. That's right. 2032 East Main Street, I understand my most favorite question's been answered, about Sodexo, we got one quarter of what we need now. Are we staying on top of the new people? Are they paying per date that they need to pay us? So we're not going to wait till they leave, and then we have a lawsuit and only get a little bit out of that.
I can comment, I know that in my consultations with the business office, they are monitoring it on an annual basis, and if there is any guarantees due, they've been paid, and I'm not sure, I would say that the prior recovery of the litigation was substantial and represented probably 70% of the lease, if not more, of the, the actual claim after it was modified.
All right, okay, and how much is this 10A, 11A, for us enough to use the ID, searching for the losing tenant?
The agreement with the IU is any advertising that we do and any print costs, so any, any copying they do for us, and any advertising, there is no charge for them to do the search, since we're part of the county.
And just how much did Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris leave here at, like 140, 150?
He was due to be making 150, but he was still at 140.
By now, all means, by hiring the new, let's put it right up to 200, 300, because it seems that's what we do here. We don't save any money when we need to, this is when you can knock it back to 80, 90,000. I mean, you get why you pay, I don't care, you still put it back. I mean, you want to save a buck every time you want to turn around, keep our schools dirty, and bring people in that shouldn't be here, and outsource everything, could be outsource that job, I guess not, but save a buck there. It seems like status quo, every time we hire a new superintendent, it's either exactly what it was at, or even higher, and I can't see why. Is there any reason for it, I mean, oh yeah, because it keeps compatible? Well, there's a lot of people out there, I think, looking for a job like that, and I like, I believe somebody said, maybe somebody within, it would come up, that would be beautiful, that would be beautiful, somebody that already has something within here that would come up the line. So, have a good night.
Bye, Terry.
Thank you.
Do you have any other public comments, questions? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn then? I'm sorry?
Well, before you adjourn, I'd like to meet our new vice principals. Were you going to introduce the new vice principal?
Do I need to put him on the spot again?
I have to do that dance.
What it goes is.
I wanted to shake all your hands, but I appreciate all you folks, saying yes. I come from Red School District for 16 years, and I met some people that are over here. So I just wanted to thank you, I appreciate it, you gave me a chance, so thank you. I missed the last meeting that you had, only because I was only occasioned when you guys voted, but thank you. I'll do my best, guarantee I'll do my best.
Welcome aboard.
Curtis.
Just one more thing, how long was Mr. Harris here, two, three years?
Not quite three, I believe, right?
In October, it would be three.
I just had another resume, you're going to come through again, I guess, okay, thank you.
Oh, you're not up to it.
Say hello again, I'm Mr. Smasal Friday, Curtis Fleming, been here since July 2nd, working hard every day, got a great first day for the school's opening, proud to be here, proud to keep serving you guys every day, looking forward to every new day.
You notice we picked the tallest guy to be the safety and security coordinator. Nothing else then? Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion, second.
Olson and, Mrs. Albrecht, Mrs. Olson.